You know, people, if you're poor, you can't dig a very deep hole.
Do you have, are you on?
And if you're, if you're rich, you can, you can dig a huge hole.
Can't get in.
And then when you get in, you have to.
Cox. I'm good. How are you?
I'm great.
I feel a lot better than Connie.
I was off yesterday because I was moving my mom's furniture this weekend. And I felt like a really old lady. I actually did some, some work yesterday. Yeah, it was pretty much a, uh, my mom's.
Now, I'm arguing with my, I just want to value it puts on my old.
And then I told him, I said, you know, I said, this is.
I'm just. I had to send you them.
Yeah, well, I'm, this is a new car smell, so it was time to.
Is it, is that your, is that your car?
Yeah, that's, that's a new one he did not.
You got a new one now?
Yeah, well, I replaced it because they finally decided we were going to total it. Now we're arguing over how much value to put on it.
You know what the value of the other one was?
Gold, one hundred percent. Well, I don't mind taking a couple thousand bucks. They wanted me to take a four thousand dollars.
That's a two, that's a two regular months discount.
It's kind of steep. Yeah, well, and they were, you know, so he, he showed his confidence. Some stripped down model, a normal twenty-one thousand dollars in a color that nobody wants, you know? And, and missing it, missing, you know, we had a few, like I've got a top package and I have a, I've got a couple of options. But, uh, we have like a little nine hundred dollars.
You've been, you've got to have a story to tell.
I, I, I sent a bunch of stuff to my wife about car.
Good morning.
I'll take twenty-four thousand.
Please join me in the flag salute and a moment of silence. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one age under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a relatively, uh, short agenda today, so I.
There's the kiss of death.
You don't have to say that out loud.
It appears that we have a short agenda. Uh, I'd like to start with the consent calendar. Most should, most should approve.
Second.
Please cast your vote.
I think fine, my. Yeah, we're almost done.
The vote, uh, the motion carries unanimously. The consent calendar is approved. Let's move to untimed items. Item number twenty, human resources and development. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good morning. I'm Tim Huntley, the Human Resources Director. We have before you a proposed program of employee discounts. What we like to refer to as the beginning of our low-cost, no-cost benefits program. Find a different way to increase the spendable dollars in the employees' pockets without an actual increase in compensation. We're looking at this as potentially a, uh, retention tool for employees, that they will discover that this is, uh, our valuable services they can get at reduced prices. If it becomes significant, we would make it part of our recruitment effort as well. The fundamental issue for us is how we should view this. And, uh, we don't view this as a case of discounts for public employees per se, but rather discounts for the largest, for the number of employees in the largest employer in the county. So it's a marketing tool for someone who wants to market their product and have access to a large employee group. The concept is also based on the fact that any local entity, and by local, we mean within Tulare County, with an actual physical place of business, would be eligible to participate in the program. So just because perhaps one fitness center, uh, willing to do this, and so is another, uh, we would not discriminate on that basis. So there would be equal access, uh, to all folks. At the present time, I believe the board is aware that Office Depot, as a matter of routine, gives employees a contract discount price on purchases equal to what the county pays. It does require some steps that they have to go through to qualify for that, but that's a standard offer. And recently Verizon offered a fifteen percent discount, both for current enrollees and, or current participants in Verizon phone service. So these would be examples of the kinds of things that we would want to put in a, a comprehensive package. There is a statement in the, here in terms of the recommendation that the Human Resources Director be authorized to sign individual agreements as necessary. I think what we're really talking about here is if somebody comes forward and says, you know, this is my discount program. It's open for ninety days. Only so many people can use it. It's sort of like what you would get when you see something, a mailer in the mail that has all the restrictions on it. I don't view this as actual formal agreements, but rather signing the kind of paperwork that allows us to go forward. In any event, that's a quick thumbnail sketch, and I would be happy to respond to your questions.
Tim, is it your thought, I guess that, I was thinking more along the lines of, uh, you know, my son was selling a, a card for his nonprofit, this school program, and, and there's a list of different, uh, companies that will give you discounts, so different things. Is that kind of what we're talking about here, or are you, because I, I guess I was thinking that, that you're, those are usually kind of like an annual thing, as opposed to someone who says, well, I'm going to give you a discount for the next sixty days. I suppose it could be a combination of the two type of things?
Yes, absolutely. The sixty days might be, they're only going to have a period of time. For example, there's a major wholesale retailer that, uh, we believe we would have an option to allow a two-for-one, uh, membership, but they're not going to keep that open indefinitely.
Gotcha.
Other kinds of, uh, discounts, like the Verizon discounts, would be ongoing. We have not, we do have a pack of, um, of discounts for amusement centers in Southern California, which has been around almost everywhere for as long as I can remember. But there, we may very well develop a discount, but that's certainly within the, the spirit of what we're trying to do here.
Well, I, I just want to comment while I've got the microphone for a second, that I appreciate any and all efforts that we can make to assist our employees in, uh, as you say, extending their revenues, so their income, so that it goes further. And I can see lots of opportunities to do that and, in ways that deal with things people need all the time. So, I mean, there may be opportunities, as you say, to, to, uh, go into things that are more for fun, but there also may be opportunities to, to go right into the heart of, uh, monthly expenses for people that can bring some reductions.
That's our goal.
Right, thank you.
We were in Sacramento last time. My wife discovered the fact that Sees Candy gives government employees in Sacramento next to the Capitol a discount. So there are a lot of organizations out there that are willing to give government employees discounts. I heard about that. It's a twenty-five percent discount, and I'll shoot anybody who brings me one of those coupons just right now. I have enough trouble without a twenty-five percent discount from.
In fact, I think we should have the chairman's wife probably bird dog.
I'm not surprised to find out that Wanda found that discount. Two, just two quick comments. In, in reading through, um, the program standards, I was, when I first read this, I thought, oh, no, this is an open door for scammers. But I'm looking at nine, number nine, number eleven. This is, these programs will not be considered to have an advantage in contract negotiations. I think that's very important, that as they come in, they realize they're not going to, just because they might have this agreement, it's not going to give them a, a, a golden ticket to the county's checkbook. And, uh, the, the next one is, uh, the number eleven, that it's not to be considered a county endorsement of that business. And, and that's going to be tricky when it comes to how we let people know that there might be a potential discount available. Because we, we're all familiar with the jewelry store discounts. The week before the sale, everything doubles in price, and then the next week it's half off.
Maybe I'm just.
That's how they do that.
Maybe I'm just picking on one industry, but.
Let me just, if, if I could comment, Supervisor Cox, one of the reasons why we're divorcing this entirely from purchasing is for that reason. And that's, was also, uh, something that was of importance to Al Guzman, that he not be involved in this program. So we're going to keep those separate. And, uh, I think most people are, are smart enough to know it's not in our interest to do that for what we're looking.
And the only thing I don't, the, the, it's Office Depot we have the agreement with now?
Yes, I believe so.
The only thing I don't like about that, I don't use credit cards unless I ab, unless I'm out of money. So if I ever use a credit card in your store, you know I'm out of money. But I don't use credit cards, and the only way I can participate was to use my credit card. And I don't use that program because I'd have to use my credit card. So I would like to see them take my debit card, which I do use all the time. But, you know, I personally, I'm one of those guys that, you know, I don't use a credit card unless it's the very last resort, so.
Yeah, this is.
One thing I don't like about that program.
Yeah, the, that one isn't one that we individually negotiated. That's a corporate policy of Office Depot of which we have taken advantage. It doesn't mean we can't ask the question, but I suspect they extend this quite a bit beyond us. I know they do, as a matter of fact.
It's based on a contract with K-L-A County. And discounts extended to everybody and other government entities in the state. Evidently, L.A. County has no problem using credit cards, Supervisor Cox.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I had one quick question. Tim, do you envision this, uh, listed on the Intranet, Internet? Will this be a full-time job for someone?
I certainly hope not. That's not our plan.
Just wondering out loud, because it looks, it, I mean, it's a great, I, I think it's a good service for the employees, but it also looks like it has the potential to be a lot.
Well, I think we need to guard against that. We certainly will put it up on the Intranet. I'm pleased just to mention in passing that our open enrollment brochure, our package for open enrollment is both on the Intranet and Internet as of yesterday, which is valuable because we have lots of employees. For example, at the fire stations that don't have access to our Intranet, but they can get that information. We also have a new search feature on our Intranet page, which will help people find stuff. So hopefully we can help make this a, um, self-service program. There will be some time. I mean, certainly getting the individual program set up and going. In most cases, they'll be working directly with the vendor. And in unique circumstances, we would expect to allow them access to the, uh, county government site. I'll give you a specific. One of the car rental companies has proposed to us a van pooling program, uh, for employees to get to work. And what we would agree to do as part of that is do a run on our employees' BY ZIP code area. And then, and con, we contact those employees, invite them to a meeting, saying, are you interested in a van pool? And then they would, if enough people show up, we could get a discounted van pool for those employees to come to work. So there are some things that will take time, but I don't look at this as a full-time position.
Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, uh, brief advice. We are researching whether there may be certain employees, uh, employees who have to file Form 700s, for example, that may have to declare these discounts on, on their Form 700s, or may otherwise have conflict of interest issues. There's a, what's called the public generally exception under both the Political Reform Act and Government Code 1090, but of course, they are different from each other. So we're going to come up with, if, if there are people, myself, for example, who should not receive the discounts, we'll make sure those people are advised.
There's always a fly. Any other questions? Attain a motion.
Chairman, I move approval of item twenty.
Second.
Moving second, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We sure appreciate it. At this time, we're going to accept public comments. If someone wishes to address the board on matters under this jurisdiction, but not on the agenda today, if you'd please come up and state your name and address.
Thought Henry was coming up.
They seen none, we'll close the public comment period and go to supervisor matters. We'll start over here with Supervisor Conway.
Oh, gosh. All I can think to mention is, of course, this is super weak in Tulare County. And, uh, uh, on Thursday, I keep getting my days mixed up. On Thursday, uh, the California Partnership with the San Joaquin Valley will have its first annual meeting, issuing an annual report, which is really on only about eight months of work, because we have to catch up with ourselves. But it will, um, it will begin with a joint, uh, meeting with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, Thursday at noon, and then the partnership extends its, its annual report meeting into the afternoon. Everyone is certainly welcome, anyone that's interested or wants to attend. I think that's all I have.
Supervisor Cox?
If, if we could get an agenda of the meetings that are coming up, that would be great as well. Like to see what's happening and what we might want to plug into. Just one thing, I guess, last night I attended the Visalia City Council meeting. There were, um, probably forty or fifty, uh, folks there that were not happy that their medical marijuana dispensary was having to close in Visalia because of zoning issues. Some misstatements were made about, um, the county's newly adopted ordinance. And I, I was able to stand up and correct those. The, the statements were made that the county's zoning ordinance was much more liberal and more accessible than the cities, when in reality, our zoning ordinance was patterned after those of the cities in our area that were passed. There were statements also made about how many, uh, customers that that particular business had. And this, one statement was made that there were one thousand four hundred customers. I don't see our H-HA, H-HSA folks here, but I think the county, as the administrator of the ID card program, had thirty-seven ID cards. So that would mean there's one thousand three hundred and sixty-three, uh, illegal users of that dispensary. So I don't see our sheriff here either. I'll be making those phone calls this morning. That's it.
Very good detective work, sir.
Supervisor Worthley?
Uh, as, just kind of piggyback on Supervisor Conway's comments, the Air Pollution Control District, San Joaquin Valley Board will be having its symposium. Traditionally, they try to have a symposium annually, and they hold it in the, in the county, uh, where the chairman resides. And it happens to be yours truly this year, so it's going to be here in Visalia. We will be having a, a board retreat, uh, beginning Wednesday morning. We have a number of new members on the airboard this year, uh, so we're going to have a retreat to, for them. And then we will proceed with the symposium and it, uh, and I think your point should be taken, Supervisor Cox. You want to be sure and get, uh, our agenda to all the supervisors too, because you're also invited to participate and, and see what's happening at the symposium, so.
I, I just cut my basic agenda last evening, so I'll be happy to, uh, forward that to you.
Yeah, I haven't seen mine yet either, so it'll be a news, it'll be a news, and I'm involved heavily in it. So it'll be interesting to see what, when, when things are being held and what's being said.
Who are the new, uh, board members, if you can, do we know those yet?
Uh, yeah, there, we have, uh, because of changing memberships in the counties, uh, we have a new member from, um, let's see, Stanislaw County is new, uh, San Joaquin County is new, Kern County is new. We have two new city representatives, three new city representatives. So on a, on an eleven-member board, I believe the majority of the members are actually new members. Times change.
Supervisor Anis?
I had a, uh, I had a meeting yesterday at Lower Thule on the success dam. And, uh, everything is pretty much on hold as far as property acquisition and everything. But, uh, hopefully the nineteenth of this month, we're going to have a meeting in Sacramento, and Colonel Chapman, Paul Zanano, and everybody should be there. And hopefully we're going to find out which direction they're going to go, whether they're going to completely build a new dam or just repair the one we've got, so. That's where we are right now with that. Trying to save money, you know, four hundred, I think the four hundred and seventy-two million dollars scared them.
Yeah, but what's driving it? The price or the?
Or the new studies?
The price has never stopped the quarter. Okay, I have quite a few items I'd like to bring up today. Uh, one is, as Supervisor Conway mentioned, this is like super weak in Visalia. We're having not only.
In Tulare County.
In Tulare County. We have not only the airboard, uh, the partnership, we also have Biz Talk, and we have the State, uh, Convention for the Latino Peace Officers Association. So every day for the rest of this week, we're having some major event in Tulare County. And I'd like to thank, uh, our, my fellow supervisors, because they chair some of these, these, uh, commissions and, and the partnership that they're able to bring the meetings to Tulare County. Last week, we had a very, I thought was a very significant meeting, which is probably the first in Tulare County. And that was a joint meeting with the cities of Visalia, Tulare, the Tulare Irrigation District, and the Quea, what, or Conservation District. And it's significant in the fact that there is a project that we're looking at in the future that benefits all of us and that we're willing to work together on this project. I had a very unique experience last Wednesday. I rode a passenger train from Mojave to Bakersfield. And obviously, there, there aren't any passengers on that rail line any longer. It was a special train put together by Burlington North. And what they were doing is lobbying to double-track part of the Tehachapi Pass. Now, a lot of, there's a major portion of Tehachapi Pass that is single-tracked, and they feel if they double-track, they can increase the volume. And that volume, surprisingly, comes from the port of Oakland, not the port of Los Angeles. So it was a, an unique experience to see, to be on a train that is, has a route that is the only working route in the United States that a train passes over itself. It's the loop, the big loop in Tehachapi. So that's quite unique to see a large freight train passing underneath this and looping around a hill, and it's passing over the tail end of its own train. Uh, the, the main emphasis for the double-track, as it affects the people in California, is the fact that it takes a lot of trucks off the road. So it has a significant impact on air quality. We had a meeting, I had a meeting with, uh, the, some ambulance people the other day, some of our providers. And so this week or the following week, Human Health Services will be meeting with all the ambulance providers and our consultant up in Fresno. And at that time, they'll receive a template of what we expect as a service level in Tulare County. So I'm glad to see the meetings taking place, and there's been significant progress, in my opinion. And there's also been some new thinking about how to provide the service in Tulare County. The ultimate benefit to us, to a degree, not only, uh, improve service, is the fact that seventy percent of our calls from our fire department are medical aid calls. And if we can reduce those medical aid calls, it has a significant impact upon our fire service. I'm looking at the clock here, we got a couple more minutes to talk.
Keep talking.
Last night, we had a community meeting up at Three Rivers. We covered the ambulance service. We covered the prescribed burn that we had up in the park. And I guess it got a little smoky up there the other day, and that's because of a hundred and fifty acres they were going to treat, a hundred and twenty of them burnt in the first day. So there were a lot of, uh, questions by residents up there on why there was so much smoke. But I was assured by the park service that they met the air quality standards and that it was monitored by, uh, the air quality people. We talked about the ambulance. We talked about the general plan. And it was a very, uh, informative and, and positive meeting. So with that, I'm still going to have to take about a five-minute recess before we get into our, our time dial.
Mr. Conway?
Well, they got stuff.
How's how you doing? Yeah, boy, you told me it was kind of random. You get them like that. Yeah, and then I got stuff I got to go to in the meantime, but, uh, next week, we're pretty busy too. And then following week, we got the, uh, I think it's an eight-county or ten-county meeting.
They, they just reclassified some other people. They did add, there was one position added.
You know, the easier thing to use is this thing forward.
Because I know we added two positions.
It's all ready to go.
Yeah. Or one this week, one this week.
This one adds a probation officer. This one adds, uh, a detective.
Yes, but I. No, you need to use your mouse to double-click on it.
Yeah, it was my understanding.
I can, what I can do is just leave it just like this. No, they won't see it until Michelle pushes the button.
And this is just ongoing progress. If you look, it's, you know, it talks about past years.
Okay, they just expand. So it's more money, okay.
That's fine. Means we're able to expand the budget, yeah.
So I'll tell you what, I'll do it, I'll tell them.
We're going to be done, we only have one item left?
Well, you got closed session.
When you left, anyone old up at that other dairy? She was working for the other firm.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, this dairy turns up.
Okay, our five minutes are up.
If that was me, you'd tell me to be quiet and sit down.
Right? You mean, Mr. Worthley?
It's all right, Ennis isn't back yet either.
George Finney with Resource Management Agency. Item number one is a public hearing on a proposed change to the zoning regulations. This particular ordinance is in response to an interim ordinance your board adopted last year, which prohibited radio, microwave, or television towers 75 feet or less in height within urban development boundaries. The proposed ordinance would instead require special use permits for towers 75 feet or less in height inside an urban development boundary, and also in the scenic corridor combining zone. You could still have towers without use permits less than 75 feet in height in other It would also include, it would also add cell towers to the list. The, the origin, the existing ordinance just refers to radio, TV, and microwave towers, so we'll add cell towers also to the, the requirement. The ordinance also includes definitions of what we're talking about, so that there's better clarity in the ordinance. And by, by, through the definitions, we've excluded amateur radio service antennas 75 feet or less in height from the use permit requirement. That was a major holdup at the planning condition, as the amateur radio community was expressed concern about that particular, so that rule, so basically, that, the rule for them stays the same. Anything over 75 feet has to get a use permit. The ordinance, again, presently requires that all towers higher than 75 feet require a use permit in any zone. The ordinance would not change that requirement, but it would add a requirement that the use permit conform to the Federal Communications Act of 1996. That's something that's come along, well, in the last 10 years, obviously, but it's something we have to, our planners need to pay attention to. I do have to report, one minor correction is needed to restore the existing rule that already requires use permits for towers less than 75 feet in height within two miles of an airport. That got inadvertently left out. We did about 10 versions of this ordinance, and the last one lost track of it, so I'd like to make, make sure that gets put back in. That's my presentation, unless there's any questions.
Just one question. George, does everyone have access to this map that I was given?
We have it, we can, please, we can put it on the screen if you'd like to see it. What the map shows is the areas that, the urban development boundary areas in the county, and also the scenic highway, eligible highways. That's not where the scenic corridor zone is entirely yet, but in the long term, it will be in through that entire area, that blue area, blue area along the highways.
And I appreciate putting that together for me, because I needed to be able to visualize that.
Any other questions? I'd like to open a public hearing at this time. A public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn for a closed session here, I just wanted, I just talked with Sarah Jimenez. She's, this is her last day reporting for the Fresno Bee here, and will be going on to Sacramento. We want to wish her well, and, and thank her for her good reporting skills of our county, and good luck to you.
Entertained a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Moved in second. Please cast your vote.
Forget about that.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, counsel, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You have items A through D as listed on your closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. I feel like Bill Sanders today.
Yeah.
I think we should call him and tell him that you beat his record.
With a five-minute recess, huh?
Yeah, gosh.
This is a new record. We're going to brunch today.
Good idea.